Tom, Tom.
Yeah, he's coming.
Okay.
If you don't care what, but guess what, come on.
You won't please won't ask. No, I heard from him about an hour ago, seven o'clock.
Uh-huh.
This should, this should be quick, uh, this should be quick.
Yeah.
Y'all got it?
Hmm.
This is, this is.
Sure will.
Everybody's working.
Okay.
Everybody looked at it? Okay, it's working.
Nice.
Wonderful. Congratulations.
Well, we've had some technical, technical.
That's fantastic.
There he is.
All right, welcome Commissioners and...
The organizer himself.
It's great. Good evening, man, how you doing?
Thank you for being here, man.
Yes, sir, no problem.
Okay.
Great.
You've been in this efforts with the Pumpkin Festival and you probably exhausted, aren't you?
I am, today.
Still dealing with it on Sunday a little bit.
I am dealing with it all day Sunday yesterday, too.
Hand one day.
All right, we are gonna call the meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance if you'll please rise and face the flag.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. Next up is determination of a quorum, we do have it, thank you Commissioners for being here. Uh, next is the approval of last month's meeting minutes.
Motion to approve?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Uh, next is continued items from last month, adoption of the system development fee and ordinance fee. Mr. Manager, can you please update us on this?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, um, the, the ordinance you have in, in your packets is actually slightly different than the one that you'll be voting on. Those changes were recommended by Attorney, Town Attorney Mark Edwards, um, just to tweak the language a little bit, but that's the only difference. And they're basically constitutes, uh, a new whereas, clarifying the language and, um, and actually citing the section in the ordinance that, uh, you know, Mark can give you more details, but basically, um, tweaked what, what y'all had from last month. The, um, the trigger, the two triggers now are, uh, basically the issuance of a zoning certificate or, uh, the commitment of, uh, water and sewer service to the development. Those are the two triggers. And you'll notice in the packet, um, the amounts, those were the ones that the Wooton Company recommended in their report.
So the, the one, is the one in our packet the one we're voting on, or is there a different language in?
It, it's slightly different, those, those changes that, um, and I can send you all the email or I can print out a fresh copy. The, the version that, um, that you're voting on is substantively the same.
It's two pages.
It's pretty much just, okay. It's just the beginning where it says whereas and all that. That's the only, that's the only difference.
Yeah, the couple of changes I made were...
Yes, please.
The couple of changes I made were not, um, didn't affect the substance of the ordinance, so I would worry more about the substance of the ordinance, if you've got questions about that.
That's more.
Yeah.
Thank you for cleaning it up.
Yeah, well.
Yeah, so this is something that's much needed, um, we're, we're seeing a good row of development here and this is gonna allow us to better our water and sewer systems, uh, where we have these system development fees attached to, uh, new houses and, and water meters to be developed. Uh, this is something we've been behind the curve on for several years. Most other cities and towns have been doing this for a very long time and so I'm glad that our town staff and town attorney have put this together for us to proceed with it and catch up with the times. Thank you all for that. And then if there are no questions, Attorney Edwards, would you like to clarify anything final?
No, like I say, um, the changes I make were just, were just cosmetic kind of at the end, you know, not, didn't have anything to do with the substance of it, yeah.
Thank you. Any questions from the Commissioners? This is a perfect time to dig in. I know you guys have already read your packets and thoroughly, uh, ready to vote. So if there are no questions and no town staff would like to add anything, then we can get an, entertain a motion to approve. And here is, you saw, did you see this one?
That's the one in the packet, right?
No, that's one Michelle just gave us.
That's the one you showed us.
This is, this is the one that...
There you go.
And that's at, uh, was it just those two?
It's still pages, uh-huh.
This is the, this is the one he just gave me. It just has a couple of different, the whereas is on top of it, that's it.
Yep. So just verbiage, no numbers.
Just verbiage, no numbers.
No numbers.
Okay.
And the same terms as far as the agreement and everything, it's just legal verbiage. That's all I saw, that's all I saw, too.
I make a motion that we accept the water and sewer system development fee ordinance.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you Commissioners for getting that business taken care of. Uh, next item on the agenda is consideration of a project agreement with Acxiom Development. And Mr. Manager, will you give us a quick update on this before we call anyone that's with Acxiom up front?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, um, this has to do with a couple of different items. Um, first and foremost, when the Bryson's Ridge subdivision was, um, uh, was, um, approved in, in its preliminary form and final form. Uh, the, part of the agreement was that, that, uh, lift station at NC five eighty-one north would be upgraded to accommodate the increased flow. Uh, there's been some delays along the line and, um, subsequent to that also is the requirement that Country Inn lift station be upgraded as well. Now, the town has spent its own money, uh, in the past to upgrade Country Inn, but there are further changes that need to be made. And that's mainly because of the way the system is oriented, both sixty-four alternate lift station and NC five eighty-one north, um, dump into Country Inn and then Country Inn sends everything to the wastewater treatment plant for treatment. So both those lift stations, uh, the, Mr. Tom White, who is the principal at Acxiom, has agreed to upgrade both those systems. Like I said, there have been some delays. So in order to formalize the process and have some guideposts and, and some deadlines, uh, I think it's time and probably should have been from the get-go that we have a development agreement with Mr. White so that we know what the expectations are on both sides. I would also add that I had some discussions with him and he's amenable to, to all of this, as well as posting a bond, uh, if we don't make some measurable progress by the end of this calendar year, so.
Everything I saw was very well thought out. Again, thank you staff for putting the effort into it.
Right, and we'll be looking to, um, Attorney Edwards to assist with that.
Okay. Attorney Edwards, anything you'd like to add on this agreement?
No, I mean, I think it, it's the agree, it's kinda been a longstanding or, uh, negotiation and so it's just a matter of, um, memorializing it in writing, but once again, the tales, manager, town staff's done all the work.
It is, I know.
I'll just be a scribe and put it in writing, so it's more than that.
Yeah. Uh, does anyone here from Acxiom that wants to speak? Okay. All right, uh, if we're ready to go, if there's no questions from the Commissioner, any Commissioners have questions before we vote?
I don't, no, I don't think we, there's not a, an actionable item, I just wanted to put it on the agenda to, to, just to highlight that, that that's where that direction we're heading and for the board's information.
Okay, it had call, it had...
There, yeah, there will be a time for a vote, Mr. Mayor, but...
Okay, all right. Thought we were knocking it out tonight. Next up is consideration of the budget amendment twenty-five dash oh-two. Ms. Clerk, would you like, Finance Officer, would you like to?
Okay, so this is just for the, um, you know, we got that second, um, platform grant, so what I'm, so what we're doing is we're just, um, taking it from the, um, economic development lineup and putting it into the grant lineup. It's our, um, it's our match. So it just has, it's, it's already in the budget, it just needs to be moved to a different part of the budget.
Fantastic. Glad we got the money to move it, so...
Well, this is actually our, um, the town's, uh, project.
Match.
I make a motion that we approve budget amendment twenty, twenty-five dash zero-three.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Uh, next up is consideration of task order from the Wooton Company for wastewater treatment plant project, a three million dollar appropriation. Mr. Manager, can you please update us on this?
So, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is the three million dollars that, um, Senator Barnes and Representative Chesser got the town last autumn, I believe it was October of last year. So, um, we have, this board has previously approved, um, a scope of work and the request for funding, I believe that was two months ago. Um, this is to actually conduct the, um, the design, planning and survey work, um, with the Wooton Company and you can see in the, in the contract docs, it's quite an extensive scope of work. All of the improvements are slated for the wastewater collection and treatment system, this, this go around. So there's nothing really in this grant for the water side, this is all for the wastewater side.
We'll finally get some improvements on those.
Commissioners, questions for the town manager?
I make a motion that we approve task order for Wooton Company for the wastewater treatment project.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Good to get that money underway to make those treatment plant project, uh, repairs, thank y'all for voting on that. Next up, consideration of contract for Alliance Architects for the Triad Depot Platform Project Design. Are there any questions on that? It's pretty straightforward.
I would like to point out, Mr. Mayor, that the town attorney has reviewed both, uh, Wooton contract and the Alliance contract as well. I think, um, the major thing to highlight, there, I believe that Attorney Edwards hadn't really, no, no recommendations for, for Wooton. But, um, for the Alliance, uh, contract, one of the things that he highlighted is, uh, and this is the second contract with Alliance, is that there's a clause in there which I'm sure is standard in the AIA contracts, which they're utilizing, for arbitration as opposed to, um, going to a, a court of competent jurisdiction should there be a dis, a legal dispute between the parties. And I just wanted to point that out to the board and Attorney Edwards can maybe elucidate a little bit more on that.
Well, yeah, and of course, anytime you're entering into any of these agreements, you know, um, you don't really enter into them planning to have a dispute, so, uh, and it's the case that, you know, the town enters into lots of contracts and we don't have disputes and so you never know, but it, should a dispute come along and we have to, uh, have a, um, to handle that, you know, we would, the town would be forced to do mediation and be forced to do arbitration, we wouldn't have the option of going to court. So, um, that's standard, just, but I just felt like it was incumbent upon me to just point that out in case, uh, we were a couple of years down the road or something like that, um, but I guess this was, is this a twelve-month one? That's the other one, just twelve.
Eighteen months.
The, the, in the eighteen months, that, this is, if something were to come up, we would have to do arbitration with them. Another thing it says in there is that, um, the town can terminate the agreement at any time, but if the town terminated the agreement, it would have to pay the architects their, uh, profits. So even though we, of course, the town has to pay them for the work that they do, um, that's, that's pretty obvious, but the other part that maybe not be obvious is that the town would have to pay them for whatever profit they were gonna make on the project, so, you know, but, um, it's somewhat the nature of contracts when you're signing with the company. They have these, they have these provisions in their contracts that are favorable to them.
And your personal recommendation, is this, uh, something that you've seen in the past and foresee, of course, I know you said we never won't foresee a disagreement, but would we be more protected with the option to go to court?
See, that's the downside, is that they basically probably would just, would walk away if you didn't, if, uh, that's, that's the thing, is if you were to, if you were to press these points with them, they would just walk away. So it's more of me just making you aware of that's in there.
Right.
And, um, your choice is, I mean, it's your, your judgment call what to do as far as whether to approve it, but your choice is either to go with this company with these provisions or to go to another company.
I mean, it's a very reputable company. It's one of the most reputable companies there is for train depot restorations. I think, again, that the town staff and the Commissioners did pick out an excellent choice in that original RFQ process. I don't foresee any problems, I've met the people, they seem, uh, to be very genuine people, uh, here to help us and so, uh, we can entertain a motion to approve that.
I will also, if, if it helps the board, uh, we're, this is the second contract, of course, we have with Alliance, so, uh, similar terms and, uh, I, I will say that they're very far along in their drawings and the board should be able to view, um, both, not just the, the depot itself and the improvements to the depot, but the platform, the draft for the platform project at next month's meeting, so.
Definitely looking forward to that. If we can get a, a motion, if there's no questions, we can, uh, consider that. Motion to approve the contract for Alliance Architects for the Triad Depot Platform.
I make a motion that we approve the Alliance Architect of the Triad Depot Platform Project Design.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Uh, next up is consideration of event permit for the Dan Finch Potter's Market. Is anyone here to represent the chamber? Uh, Dan, okay, everyone have that in your packet?
Given that the chamber had a pretty busy weekend, uh, we'll gladly pinch-hit for them. This is, um, similar to, as a matter of fact, I think it's virtually identical to what the board, this board reviewed at last year's meeting. I don't think there are any changes from last year's agenda. It was a very well-attended, uh, event last year.
People liked it.
And, um, a lot of people liked it, the merchants, um, citizens and, um, the people who attended the, uh, the show, the vendors themselves. Always a popular event.
And after this, we may love to have a chamber update about the Pumpkin Festival, uh, but, uh, do you have anything to add about the chamber's Dan Finch Potter's Market?
This afternoon, we briefly spoke about that, uh, in a text about the permit being exactly what you said the same, that's what we had before.
All right, if we can get a motion to approve the, uh, Dan Finch Potter's Market permit?
So moved.
If we can get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. All right, next up is the reports, opportunities, let's start with the code enforcement. I was quick, did you cover the place, uh, going out on the east side of town with the, uh, eighteen-wheelers?
Yes, we sent out an additional letter, we sent one out a while back, have them clean up either install a fence, they chose to die with either one of them, so we sent a new letter out today, we're saying they give them a timeline if so many of our days is getting done, if not, we'll be trying to appear some fines, penalties all done, try to make them, by the way.
And where are we or how are we doing on a standardized enforcement?
Well, one of the things that, um, Mr. Lucas, um, and Attorney Edwards and I need to discuss is, um, the, in, the enforcement vehicle, like with standardizing the, the procedure and, and, and doling out fines. So it's, um, unfortunately, the compliance, the people who, uh, gladly comply, comply almost immediately, if, you know, if they need extra time, we're happy to give it and, you know, usually they do. And those that are scofflaws basically are never gonna comply, so there has to be, uh, unfortunately, a stick to accompany the...
Like you said, most of them are all just immediately taken care of, but some of them are months going on.
So, yeah.
Pushing year or over.
So we, we just need to discuss, I just need to spend some time with, um, with Sean and, and with Attorney Edwards to get that all squared away.
All right, maybe by the end of the year, we'll see, uh, we'll see that and start in, uh, enforcing, taking care of a lot of these issues.
That's the intent.
Thank you, thank you so much for being here, thank you for your help, okay? All right, chamber updates.
Kinda give you a cap on the Pumpkin Festival we just had weekend, um, things came together, the last minute, everything I think went, went, went well. Uh, parade happened, thank you for, Police Department for coming through with that and, uh, getting us the coverage we needed and reaching out into our communities and law enforcement communities and us stepping back and trying to make things happen for the town of Spring Hope, um, things worked out very well. Um, no issues that I've heard of, so we'll get the chief's report in a sec about things that happened, um, if anything happened crazy. Um, but, um, it was a good day from what I saw, the weather cooperated, um, we had good music that evening and came back out and watched the, the Embers come and they performed well, um, so I think everything went over okay, okay.
It really did, I enjoyed it, it was really fun. So looking forward to it again next year. Uh, y'all have a lot going on at the chamber, are there any other updates you wanna give us about any future, uh, events or, uh, any general business chamber updates?
Um, I do know that we received, uh, invoice today from, from the, from the town, I wanted to mention that, that we just got it today, so we'll be, which we're not as soon as possible with that, but, um, that's, that's the latest that we have with, thanks.
Okay, very well, um, thank you for those updates.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it, congratulations, I know it was tough, okay? It is, it's the same people pulling this stuff together over and over and over and we have got to reach our younger community and get them engaged and get them involved and that is really hard, but it is very stressful to put these events together year after year with the same people over and over and I commend them, God bless them, for being here and being in this community and being a part of it because it is a very stressful job and thank y'all for continuing to do it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, uh, Police Chief's Report.
So this month, we had, um, six listed incident reports, uh, two hundred and four, two hundred and forty-six total calls for service, ninety-three traffic stops, uh, twenty-three security checks, four traffic accidents, um, five domestic violence calls, uh, non-chargeable, uh, eleven, eleven disturbance slash fight, uh, fight calls, uh, eighteen total investigations, uh, with fifteen cleared.
Can you tell us what security checks are? I think that's a really nice thing to do.
So, in our system with security checks, um, I've touched on it a couple of times before, you can't necessarily, um, just check in and do, so you, you can, but it's, it's kinda hard to explain. So when you go into our CAD system, which is how we're dispatched, um, and how you can self-generate calls, just, like, he's aware of it, you can go through and simply type in, "I'm off on foot with a security check for food line," and that will give you one. I've directed these guys not to do that. What I want them to do is to check off for that shopping center. So that way, when I know that I see a security check for food line, that everything in that shopping center is being checked.
Mm-hmm.
So it's not just twenty-three individual buildings, it's gonna be twenty-three complete.
Areas.
Complete areas. And a lot of them, it's, it's kinda hard to remember to do, plus that's what their job is, they're out doing that, they're out walking and doing that anyway. It's probably a little on the lower side, I would probably be willing to bet that it's probably closer in the sixty to seventy range for security checks, but this is just what's getting put in the system when after hours, when they get out, walk around the pharmacy and things like that, that gets put in here.
I think it's just wonderful that they do it. I mean, the police department walks around and, and checks on businesses after they're closed, pulls on doors, makes sure they're locked, goes in and talks to the managers and the business owners, I just, I mean, I think it really gives a personal touch and that, it's really something above and beyond that our small-town police department does and I appreciate it, I think the business owners, uh, really do appreciate it.
And it's just, for instance, the other night, um, Officer Raper, one of the new guys, uh, was out on foot walking around Scoop's Towing, which is out by the old fabrication where the solar field's out on Rockaway, and he actually caught a vehicle in there when he was out on foot patrol trying to, to steal a vehicle back that was towed and repossessed that day, so. Caught him, caught him in the act out there, they're, they're doing a great job.
They are.
The guys are, the guys are doing a really good job.
Yeah, now you have a bulletproof vest, no?
I don't.
Okay, you've gotten awfully, uh, awfully, uh, awfully beefed up over the last three meetings, I'm telling you. Golly, I would not wanna face that police chief.
My wife would differ about giving a...
I was gonna say, you probably put it on, she doing it.
As far as the Pumpkin Festival itself, we had, I wanna say, it, it was either seven or nine total calls during it, nothing major, um, I would say the two, it was a, a small fight, uh, was another, just a domestic type call, um, two lost children which were located within minutes, um, so pretty much, you know, you're parking and I think we had one larceny, but it was recovered as well. It wasn't actually a larceny, it was a misplaced item that was... So, you know, just a lot of people, a lot of stuff going on, you're misplacing things, but not as far as any reportable crime that day, we did not have any.
And thank you for your efforts to help make that happen. It was a great...
And the guys wanted me to tell you thank you for lunch that day as well.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, okay.
Chief, I got an idea for your security checks, um, if your officers would leave a business card in the business that they check, that kinda gives that business owner some reassurance that, you know, it's not just word of mouth that you guys stopped by there, that they actually get that card and say, "Well, the police stopped by here," at least, you know.
We were actually doing that.
Doing that, right, right, right.
And what was happening was, we were getting about twenty-five, thirty calls every day, making sure everything was okay.
Right, okay.
You're scaring people.
That's good. You're scaring the folks. All right, well, yeah, I, I know that that, you know, that accountability in the, in the community from the police department, being a cop myself is, is very important, you know, that...
I like to throw the occasional one on a random door with my info.
Yeah. Yeah, 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 I, I think that's really important, yeah, it's really important that our community knows that they're out here.
That's right.
So that they see that, you know, and it gives them a confidence to know that we have a police department that works.
Yeah, we got a really good group right now.
That's fantastic, thank you. Police, uh, now, let's see, manager, how about you?
Well, first of all, I wanna commend the police, I wanna commend the Public Works Department, they were a great help, I, I have heard, um, many compliments, um, both the police and the Public Works, um, departments for their assistance during, not just the Pumpkin Festival, but all the time, I mean, they're, it's, I know some of you all remember what it was like with, when, um, we had a third-party contractor, for example, uh, in Public Works and it, it's very different today to have our own people and to be able to rely on them. Similarly, as the chief said, we have a great group of, uh, young, uh, young and veteran officers now and, um, you know, chief's doing a good job leading that group as well. So, it, I, there are a couple of items, I don't wanna keep everybody 'cause we're having a quick meeting here, but I wanted to highlight on the water distribution project, we actually got preliminary contact, um, preliminary comments back from the public water supply, the folks at Public Water Supply, so, uh, Wooton Company submitted a revised or is revising the plans for that resubmital and so hopefully we'll hear from them. It's been since August first that we've been waiting on those permits and that's really all we're waiting for on that project to take it out to bid and then the water... And then the water project will be out. So the parking regulations that this board adopted last month, well, two months ago now, we have ordered those signs. We're waiting on those to come in and then we'll, we'll post those at the four major entries into town. There'll be one at 64 Alternate on the eastern side, one on the western side at NC 581 North and at NC 581 South or South Walnut Street. That will be notifying truck drivers of the ordinance. And then the police will be able to enforce that when necessary. Mr. White, I heard from him about his two buildings on Ash Street. He said he had ordered sheet rock and was planning on sheet rocking the buildings in September. We're now into October, so I don't know where he's.
Hope he gets here quicker than those windows.
I, I think he has those windows on order. He's waiting on the, on that window.
They were supposed to be installed in August.
Yeah, so. As far as I know, he, I think he, last I talked to him about that, which was sometime in early September. He said the window was, there was something backordered on it, so. We did have a bad sprinkler pipe here in Town Hall that's being replaced. We also had our annual fire sprinkler inspection, everything went well on that. Nash County provided and in a local government agreement for the $1 million pass-through grant. I know y'all read about it in the paper and so on. So we're, the language is now with Attorney Edwards and then we should have that for the board at next month's meeting. The audit, I want to thank Michelle and her staff for all their hard work on the audit. We are waiting on the final audit report. The auditors have everything they need and, you know, we had a very good visit with them in September and during one of the hurricanes when it was storming in Wilmington. And they made the drive up here irrespective of that. So we're waiting on that and hopefully we'll be making the deadline, which is the end of this month, the initial, the first deadline. That's about it unless you all have, oh, one thing I did want to point out is we did have a couple of streets out on, in Bryson's Ridge that they didn't put their carts out in time for trash pickup. It's incumbent on residents to please remember to put your carts out at night because GFL comes through early in the morning. And I, I know you all know that. So if your carts aren't out, they're not going to pick them up and they can't swing back around because his, his route is delineated. So sometimes he can get it and usually he can't. So, so I just want to remind people of that. And as I said, you should have some plans to look at on the depot projects at next month's meeting. Any questions?
In that audit, just so we remember where we were just a few short years ago on the state's watch list. And it's amazing that we can now say that our audits are perfect and everything is balanced and the budget is doing so much better. We're, we're not dealing with the state watch list and everyone watching us as closely because it's right, it's correct. And it's the way that it's supposed to be. And that's a huge accomplishment.
Yeah, Michelle has taken great strides in updating and revising the policies and procedures to make sure that we're compliant. So, and I'm very proud of her for doing that. She's been, you know, she's a relatively new supervisor, but she's doing great. I'm very proud of her for working with her staff. She's, she's been a great mentor, so.
Very good. Thanks for developing them and continue to train them well and keep this engine running smoothly. So I think everything is really going good right now.
We got a good staff. We got, and we want, as I've told this board, it's easier to keep good people than it is to hire good people. It's hard, we still have a Public Works position and I think we've gotten maybe three applications for. And not really.
Yeah. The right fit.
Yeah. So it's certainly a lot easier to just be able to keep, hold on to people.
I agree. All right. Commissioners, any final comments or questions?
None.
Okay.
None?
Okay. All right, then we can. All right, all in favor? We are adjourned, thank you.
Don't forget that the fire department is turning hydrants. So you may get some brown water.
Yep.
But it's not because of the town, it's because of what's going on in the town.
I think the coloration is, is gone. It may just be slight work, because they dumped a lot of water.
People that said they had undiscolored water, but it's not because of what was bad. It's probably, they probably turned it too fast.